Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of August 29th, 2024. Recognized in attendance are members myself, Joe Parisi, Catherine Schlitt, Peter Canavo, and Michael Nyman on Zoom. And I declare we have a quorum. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting being held in person and on Zoom. For the record, the Zoom meeting ID is 821-5353-9555. Okay, moving right into business. We have our first hearing is the petition of Brian and Susan Wong seeking a special permit under 1.9, 2.4.3 to alter, expand a non-conforming structure and a variance under 1.7, 3.2.1 for front yard setback at 23 Way Road.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street. I am here on behalf of Brian and Susan Wong. They are the trustee owners of 23 Way Road, and they are actually with me here tonight. It's always nice to be able to come in person to see these meetings. Mr. Chair, I was here Tuesday night, and I know that one of these microphones is notably louder than the other. You may have it, but there may be a quieter microphone. Can't promise you anything, but there definitely was an issue Tuesday night also.
Hello?
They're all super loud, huh? Someone touched the mixing board, I guess. In any event, I'm going to share my screen, and we'll get this thing moving along.
Hello?
Okay. So as I mentioned, we are here discussing 23 Way Road. And we are looking to permit the addition to the right side of the existing structure you see here with the red bubble line around it. This addition is going to accommodate an elevator installation and additional caretaker rooms if those become necessary later on. And this basically allows the applicants to drive in, grab a car, get into the elevator, and access all the floors of the home. They live in Brookline technically primarily now, but since purchasing their home in Gloucester, what they thought was going to be maybe a summer weekend situation, they've, as many do, kind of fallen in love with the area and have decided that this is actually where they're going to look to spend the majority of their time into retirement. And so they're planning ahead. They're both able-bodied and healthy now, but time is undefeated against people, and so they want to plan ahead and make sure this house is ready for them if and when stairs become problematic or if and when in-home health care may be necessary later in life. So we are in the R20 district. We are a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a conforming lot. There's actually two structures. One is the detached garage that's entirely in the front setback area, but that's not being touched. Then you have the principal structure which encroaches into the front yard setback area. It's 11.9 feet from the property line where 30 is required. But again, it is actually considerably further from the traveled portion of Way Road, but if you look at the actual lot line itself, it's only 11.9 feet from there. So the relief requesting a special permit to alter and expand. And again, we've been going through this a lot recently. There is an existing variance that at the time was necessary, and today would no longer be necessary. And I think as a belt and suspenders, we'll probably just want to amend that variance just to recognize that it exists. But again, if it was coming forward today for the first time, we wouldn't have the variance at all. And so that was due to a project that was done in the 2008, 2009 timeframe, and that took the structure which was already in the front yard setbacks. It wasn't creating a new violation, but it was pushing three feet further. And back prior to the Dedrick case, if you were going to be expanding further closer to a property line, even if you were already in the setback area, you needed a new variance. Now that's all done by special permits alter and expand. So again, if they were doing the 2008 work today, it would only be a special permit, but because they were doing it in 2008, it needed a variance. And because the structure now exists in part due to that variance, we should probably just to be safe amend it. But the work being requested tonight does not require a variance, requires a special permit to alter or expand. And you'll see actually that it's been designed to make sure that it flows with the existing I think I wish I had the math right. You'll see that the houses, again, is at 11.9 feet from the property line at its closest, and this addition is about 13 and a half feet at its closest. So again, even under the old rule, this would have been a special permit, and under the new rule, it's certainly a special permit. The left side yard, sorry, the right side yard setback area has been left untouched. You'll see again, it's designed to make sure that it does not create any new non-conformities that would require fresh variances. It's only working within the already existing penetration into the front yard setback. Per usual, I have all the building plans. If you need to look at these, we can come back and flip through. That's an aerial shot of the property. That's the GIS data, and then a shot from one side and a shot from the other side. So the standard to be applied, we need to make sure that the board, if it finds there's an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, you have to find that such increase is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing situation. So right now, they're already about 470 square feet in the front yard setback area. They're going to add another 215 square feet, so I think there's obviously going to be an increase in the non-conforming nature. That being said, Way Road is a loop. It is improved to a much narrower degree than the layout of the road is, and this house in particular has shrubbery separating visually a large portion of the front of this property from the travel part of the way. And again, back in the 08, 09 decision that you have in your file, there was a condition put in place about making sure that existing improvements within the layout of the unimproved right-of-way were not going to exceed. They made a little arc line, the whole exhibit, and we went out there and confirmed that all the maintenance that's been done to date is in compliance with that special condition from the 08, 09 decision. And we would, if the board wants, repeat that condition in any favorable decision we might be able to get on this. Again, I don't know that it's necessary because it still exists, but we would take it again if it makes anyone feel comfortable. I think the neighbor would feel comfortable knowing that that was repeated. Again, this is a good shot. You can see the shrubbery against the road protecting the view of the house. Another shot of the house from overhead. So we're going to, again, if necessary, I think probably you'll be inclined to do so. If we need to amend the variance, you once again have to find that our liberal enforcement of the GZO would create a hardship. A literal enforcement would mean not only not doing this project, it would mean tearing off the addition that was built 15 years ago. And that hardship definitely relates to the shape of both the lot, which again has a curved front yard setback that is setback from the paved portion of the road and not set so far back from the property line itself, as well as the house being located where the house is located. And you have to ensure that granting the relief of amending the variance doesn't derogate from the intent of the ordinance or harm the public good. Again, letting this house stay as it has for the last 15 years and adding an addition that is further away from the front property line than the existing house, I don't think has any impact to the public good or is against the interest of the ordinance. So again, relief requested, special permit to alter and expand under 243, and amendment of the variance under 1.7. We'll end my presentation there by thanking you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, turn it back.
Any questions at this point by the board? Take public testimony? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor, please come forward. And I remind you, if you're on Zoom, you have to hit your raise hand device button on your device, and we'll pull you in, or if you're in the audience, just come forward to speak. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Either come forward or raise your hand. Seeing no one, no need for rebuttal. Discussion by the board or further questions? I have one question. Where are the AC units going to go? Because they're now where the new addition will be.
I'm not sure if we have that answer, do we? Into the back. And if I'm facing...
To the right of the addition, okay. Yeah, we... Sure, they wouldn't want them in the front behind the bushes, but obviously, nobody's raised the issue, so.
Yeah, I think it's a modest addition. I don't have a problem with it. I don't think it... I mean, it does intensify the existing non-conformity, but I don't think it's really much more detrimental than the existing non-conformity. I would like to see the condition also carried forward to maintain the vegetation. But other than that, I have no problem with it.
Michael, you good?
Yeah, beautiful project, beautiful design. Yep, no issues.
I'm going to need a motion on the special permit to amend the variance and the condition.
On the petition of Brian and Susan Wong seeking a special permit to alter, expand a non-conforming structure and a modification of the existing variance for the project at 23 Way Road, I would move approval for the special permit and modification of the variance.
Second.
Yeah, with the condition that you commented on, Catherine.
Thank you, with the condition.
Second. Motion made in seconded, roll call vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, on both.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Schlitt?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, you've heard of decisions favorable? Use a draft for us, would be great.
Will do, thank you very much.
Okay, next, first, new applications, the petition of David O'Leary and Erica Frontero seeking a special permit under 2.4.3 to alter and expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure and variances under 3.2.1 from front yard setbacks to construct an addition and deck at 25 Castle View Drive, represented by Attorney Visnick. If you're not talking, if you're not talking in, it won't go on the Zoom.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and public out there in Zoom land. My name is Robert Visnick. I'm from Cape Ann Law in Rockport, and I'm here tonight to represent Erica Frontero and David O'Leary, and the project is at 25 Castle View Road. It's a similar type of situation as what Joel just described. I won't be as facile as he was in terms of getting the items up on the screen, but I'll give it a try. Their project is to expand their kitchen and create an expansion of living space to include a gym and media room. They are Gloucester natives and Cape Ann natives. They presently do not live in Gloucester full-time, but they have been full-time from time to time, and like most people, hope to get to the point where they can return to live here full-time. They do not rent this house. They love it, and they want to spend more time here. This project is in the R80 zoning district, and my little bit of research indicates that previously they had a 30-foot front setback, and now it's at 40 feet. And thus, they need a variance to go down to 29 feet, and they need a special permit to expand the pre-existing non-conforming structure. The issue with this lot, as you can see, is that we have a very curved sort of front, and the house was built, I would describe it as built backwards. The back of the house is facing what would traditionally be the front, and I think that was done historically for view purposes. And so a variance is needed, and the hardship in this case is that they need to be near the living space in the kitchen area, which requires them to go into what is the front setback and go from 40 feet to 29 feet. There is an architect who is going to introduce this project and give you the details. As of about 10 seconds ago, he could not get into the Zoom, so I will check with him while I see if I can get you a different screen.
What's his name? Tell him to raise his hand, we'll be able to pull him in. Am I in? Name an address for the record, and then tell us what you want to say.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tony Rosine, an architect for the project, and my address is 1 Copper Beach Lane in Nahont, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
And if I can, I'll go ahead and share my screen here. Everyone can see the photograph of the house?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to quickly start there. I know Mr. Visnick just showed the site plan and explained sort of the situation on the site. This is the street view. As you can see, the house, this is the rear. From an architectural perspective, this is the rear of the house facing the street. So just to give you a little context there, this again is the site plan where you can see an overlay on this plan. The blue is indicating the existing deck and steps coming down to the driveway, and the red outline with the gray shading is our proposed addition in this case. Jump over to, this is the proposed rear or front elevation, street-facing elevation, where we are going to be adding, sort of expanding the kitchen and the areas below at the walkout basement level. Worked really hard because the basement level is at grade to sort of try to step the massing from grade to the basement structure with a low roof here, and then up to the second floor or the second level, which is actually the first floor of the home. Just going to pop through here real quick. So this view shows the existing first floor with the street, the street being on this side. This is our 40-foot setback line that comes through the stairs here. We're proposing to renovate this side and do an addition that would exceed the setback line in this area. So we worked in different ways to try to see if we could do this a little differently. We just can't get without significant reconstruction, really can't enlarge this kitchen. And the purpose for this, as Mr. Visnick said, was that Eric and David spend quite a bit of time here. They have a lot of family in this area, and so they're trying to make it a little bit more comfortable for the time that they do spend there, but also long-term as they, their children grow, and they continue to spend even more time here and entertain family and friends. So our real only option was to step towards the street. And see at the kitchen level, the first floor level, we're not that far into the setback, but in order to gain a little bit more room in the basement, which I'll show, I pushed out a little bit further, and then it also helped me kind of create this massing so that the house doesn't present to the street too heavily. So the basement plan ends up looking like this, where this is the corner that pushes out the furthest into the setback, but then it allows them to have a little bit more sitting space, room for the kids in here, and then also have a little bit more of a space for some exercise equipment, things of that nature. And then where we did have a deck across the more of the front of the house, we're going to be expanding it, pushing it to the side of the house and into the side yard. So just to jump back to the proposed elevation, this is the kitchen level here, and this is where the sitting area, rec area in the basement, and the kids' area is here, and then the driveway is to this side, so.
Anthony, Michael Nyman here. Could you possibly go back and show me floor plan where the existing porch is? It's about four blocks back, I think. Yes?
Sure, this one?
So is the existing stair currently encroaching into the setback? And is the porch existing into the setback?
I think the best way to answer that one would be to show you the survey here, which is probably slightly more accurate than mine.
Still looks like it from the survey to me, right?
Yes, you're correct on the steps. Just trying to zoom into that portion.
The non-conformity, Mike, was on the back corner.
No, the issue for me is why does he need a variance if he's already in setback?
We'd have to ask Mr. Visnick as to whether the stairs are part of the existing non-conformity. What I was informed by the surveyors, you can see, is that the corner of the deck right here, as they surveyed it, is 40.1 feet. So this corner is...
I can see that, sure.
...informing, yeah.
No, listen, the reason I'm asking, I mean, I always just like to be very specific that if you're already into the front yard setback, then I think all you need is a special permit. So unless somebody tells me otherwise, it doesn't look to me from that drawing, from that site plan, that you need a variance, that you need...
Mike, the reason you do the non-conformity, like I say, is on the back, what we call the rear. That's the non-conformity, that triangle. In the front, the building is built within the setback. The stairs can protrude three feet into the setbacks and not require variance, but those are going away now. So his addition is definitely a new encroachment into the front yard setback, and that's why the variance for front yard setback.
Are there any other questions? That was pretty much, kind of explains the project and how we arrived where we did. Any other questions on that?
How do you, if you come to visit this person, you pull in the driveway now that the stairs are gone? Is there a front door?
Yes, I can show that to you. Currently, there is, this is, sorry to jump around here, but this is the driveway side. There is a door into the basement level here.
Right.
That takes you to the...
That's how you come into the house? Okay.
Yes, that's correct. And then, of course, once we are done with the proposed, we can also access it through the yard. There's a set of steps up to the yard and then onto the deck, and then through into the, we'd work like this, where we come up these steps, we come up these steps, and then there's a door here in as well. And then, of course, there is a front door that faces the rear of the property that's over here.
Great, thank you. Attorney Visnick, anything else?
Yes, my clients polled the neighborhood, and they spoke to, I think, eight above others, all of whom were in favor of the project. There was an individual at 38 Castle View Drive who submitted a letter, and the way I analyzed that letter was it wasn't opposed to the project, but they had issues as to construction in general. It's not really specific to zoning issues, and I have spoken with Mr. Rusarian and with my clients, and they recognize that, and they're going to inform all of their contractors and their subs to be respectful and obedient and follow all the required restrictions.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Yes?
My name is Susan Morrison. I live at 38 Castle View, and it's my letter that I'm referring to. And we don't have issues with the project. In fact, we think it's actually a very nice addition that they're planning to put on. I think it will improve the house, and we have no issues with anyone trying to improve their property. In fact, we moved to Castle View two years ago after living in Swambscott for 25 years and enduring daily chaos, neighbors, non-neighbors, air traffic, and particularly in the last three years when the runway was opened at Logan. People in Swambscott don't talk about this because they're afraid it's going to affect their property values, and indeed, it should because it's quite unbearable there now, in my opinion. So when we found our house on Castle View, we were so impressed by the serenity and peacefulness of the environment, and it's been a godsend for us, to be honest with you. I can sleep, I enjoy being outside, we particularly enjoy the nature. We're fortunate, we abut conservation land, and so we've got a lot of wildlife in our yard. It's amazing, absolutely. We have deer in our yard every night. Just yesterday, I saw a young fox in the backyard. It's great, it's really, really great, and we love it there. But we're also very familiar with construction and construction crews and the things that they do, because frankly, they don't care. They just want to get the job done and move on to the next thing and make money. So it is because of our desire to continue to preserve the environment, which we're very concerned about, and our own peace of mind, that I did put forth five conditions that I would like you to consider. And we had a similar project in Swambscott, and the zoning board did incorporate the conditions that we asked for, and I'd appreciate if you do the same thing. I'm prepared to read those conditions if you'd like.
Yes.
Thank you. All construction work to begin no sooner than 8:30 a.m. in the morning and end no later than 4:30 p.m. on Monday through Friday. There will be no construction work of any kind on Saturday, Sunday, and any legal holiday. Will be no construction vehicles, trucks, cars, trailers, or other equipment of any kind parked overnight on Castle View. This has recently happened with another neighbor. In fact, they had a masonry truck outside parked on Castle View for 10 days, and the work wasn't being done. The contractor wasn't even there. In addition, all such vehicles shall be parked in the driveway at 25 Castle View or on the same side of the street as 25 Castle View. I certainly don't want them parked all along my side of the street and perhaps blocking my driveway. In addition, I would like to ask that there be no turning of vehicles on Castle View or turning in any neighbor's driveway simply because of the backup alarms that I would be hearing constantly, which are most annoying. Any refuse, trash, food waste, bottles, cans, cigarette butts, whatever, shall be disposed of daily in one or more sealed containers. I'm not talking plastic bags, I'm talking about containers that are rigid and closed. And I say this for several reasons. The wind there is relentless in the fall and the winter, and everything will blow everywhere, including onto my property and also onto an adjacent, into an adjacent detention pond. And while I'm talking about the detention pond, I'm not sure whether or not this is a protected waterway or protected wetlands. I've made a call to the Conservation Commission, I've also reached out by email, and I've not gotten a response to either. However, I was a commission member on the former, on the Conservation Commission in Swambscott for several years, and I think it may be a protected wetland. I've not been able to find anything on the Conservation Commission's agenda about a notice of intent being filed, just something to bring to your attention, because there are a lot of animals that accumulate right around that waterway. They things, they drink water, and again, it goes to my point of not allowing garbage of any kind, refuse, to blow into that area. And I myself have even gone down into that area to remove some of the refuse that I've seen, because I can actually see it from my house. It's not very pleasant. In addition, any sand, rocks, other debris left in front of 25 Castle View at the end of the workday should be swept and removed every day. And I would ask that there be no playing of a radio or any kind of audio equipment outside. It can be very, very disturbing, and crews don't care. I work from home every day. My wife and I are there 365 days a year. It's our home, our full-time home. We don't live anyplace else. That said, I, I, you know, I appreciate your attention and, and just to reiterate, you know, David and Erica are great neighbors. They're respectful. They're, they're quiet. They're good people. Children are lovely and we don't, we don't have any issues with the project except for the noise and trash factor that I think are very real concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I think none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the project? Any opposition? None? Biznick? Want to respond, although it wouldn't be a rebuttal, but to any of the issues raised or not?
I would respectfully request that the architect address some of those. It's not really within my bailiwick. We did discuss them and I think he has a, an opinion as to which ones are, are practical and, and doable and which ones that uh, he may have.
Okay, sure. Hi, uh, this is Tony Rosine again. I actually uh, tend to agree with um, a lot of those, if not all. Having uh, done this for quite a long time, um, I totally understand the concerns. We certainly, I, so I'm pretty involved with this and in, in uh, the fact that I've set up a, a particular general contractor that I have worked with for quite a while and find to be uh, one of the best I've ever worked with. And um, I've been in this business for twenty-two years. So um, he is, uh, I actually spoke to him earlier today. We talked about this. He isn't, he doesn't really have any issues with this. Uh, the one thing that we did um, just sort of talk about was the timeframe a little bit. I don't like people starting work early around me either. So I really, I really do understand this. Um, cause I work from home as well. So one thing he just said, yeah, I can do this, but it, it probably will prolong the um, the project slightly. Uh, don't really know exactly how, how impactful it will be. But shortening the days of these workers um, means they have to be there more days. So in his opinion, if we could, you know, keep it to a seven, seven-thirty start, uh, where the, maybe the, the workers arrive between seven and seven-thirty and then they begin it's uh, at seven-thirty. And then also have a, a little closer to five, you know, five o'clock finish. He, you know, he's, he was okay with not having the weekends, but again, it just prolongs uh, the project to not have some timeframe. I would never expect them to be there on a Sunday. I think that's uh, I think that's not necessary and um, and pretty invasive. So um, if there was some time that could be conceded to on Saturdays occasionally, at different points in time, that, that certainly is very helpful. So otherwise, uh, I agree with um, keeping a clean site, keeping the, you know, I don't appreciate vehicle, vehicles being parked overnight either. There may be a time or two where, where we have those vehicles or tra- a trailer in particular. Um, I do believe that the, the driveway in this case is sizable. Uh, we will have dumpsters in there, certainly at the beginning. Um, so if we can keep them off the street, we will do everything we can to uh, to make sure that that happens and as well as a clean site. So I, I really don't have an issue with it. I just, I think if we could get a little bit more leniency on the timeframes, then that would work for us.
Thank you.
No, she needs to sit down.
No, you don't have, you don't get this free bot. I'm sorry. Okay. I can hear you. Hey. Question by the board.
Yeah, so I have strong opinions. Michael, I'm a thirty-year retired builder. I don't build anymore. Uh, I did projects just like this many years. Uh, I think eight-thirty to four-thirty is uh, understandable that uh, the neighbor would want that. I think it's not realistic um, timeframe for the builders to efficiently get their work done. I think seven-thirty to five uh, is a fair timeframe. Um, and I think maybe, I, I have, I personally would have an issue with imposing no Saturdays. I'm not really sure how to set some parameters for that. So I, I just feel like it's too restrictive. I don't feel like we have the ability to set some of the restrictions that uh, the neighbor has concerns about, you know, as far as the trash, um, sort of demanding certain kinds of containers and stuff like that. Uh, I don't feel like we should be doing that because I don't think we can enforce it. Uh, I don't know who could enforce it, the building inspector, you know what I'm saying? So.
I agree, Michael, the um.
I'm hoping for the good graces of the, of the owner of the project. Uh, it sounds like the architect uh, is pretty seasoned as well and pretty sensitive. That was my, that was my take. Um, so I'd be careful with the restrictions.
I agree. I think the project's nice. It's a great addition. It's not, I can see the justification for the variance due to the odd shape of the property being such a curve on the frontage. But with regard to the restrictions, I, I, I don't support any of them. There are laws in our community, Gloucester, of when you can work and when you can't work. And seven, if they're willing to say seven to five, that's fine. But that's a, they need the, the whole idea of this is that people feel they're going to be inconvenienced. Well then, why are we going to make them stay there longer and take an extra month to build this? If we're concerned about inconvenience, let's get the project done. So I think working seven to five is fair. I think they should have to be able to work Saturday because things are going to come up. You know, the, the, the kitchen counter installer needs to come on a set, you know, there's a lot that goes on that can't be restricted. Sundays and holidays, no problem. Legal holidays. The, as we've set parameters before, like with the YMCA, it's just the uh, the documented major holidays. Parking on the street or the drive, it's not going to be a constant thing because those, those tradespeople come in their trucks and they leave, but there's gonna need to be a trailer. There's gonna need to be a storage trailer for supplies. There were going to be times when something goes overnight, like and a concrete pump has to stay until the next day to finish pumping, pumping the footings. There's just little things that are going to come up. I don't anticipate, sound like a professional building company. They're not going to just bring a bunch of equipment there and leave it there. But they also can't be expected to pull away every backhoe and every dump truck and everything, putting in that foundation. Because we're saying, we're going to say they can't stay overnight. Not, not realistic. Not if you want to get this project done. Uh, the waste rules are pretty clear in town. The dumpster required, the porta-potties are required. Saying they can't play a radio, I would never approve, vote for that restriction. I mean, it can't be obnoxious, but we're, we're in no way to put conditions on how normal construction is done. So with that said, I would certainly support the project as it's submitted. And if any members want to include any of these slight conditions, I'd go along with it, but not all of them.
I can make a motion if you want.
Sorry, my mic wasn't going. Um, I was just gonna say, haven't lived with many construction projects around me. I sympathize with the noise and the backing up the trucks beeping all the time and, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that, you know, you have to give a little latitude to people who are doing projects. If, my concern about a lot of these restrictions, not the trash, of course, the site should be kept clean and, you know, you could put all the vehicles on your property as much as possible and um, try to keep them on your side of the street. But it, it just adds an enormous expense for the, for the property owners too, because setting up and, and closing down takes time at each end of the day. And if you don't have those extra work hours, then they're spending more money setting up and closing down, which I don't really think is a fair condition to impose on someone who's trying to get a construction project. I also, you know, do think it would just lengthen the period of time that you have to live with a construction project going on. But, you know, I think we've all had to endure them from time to time and, you know, it's just part of living in a community where there's construction going on quite a bit. So I'm, I um, you know, I think our city ordinance is pretty well covered. Trash and hours, work hours that, that construction can go on. So I too, while I sympathize with the annoyance of having a construction project, I, I would not be in favor of imposing anything beyond what our city ordinances require, our noise ordinances, our work hour ordinances, etc. I also do think it's an, it's a nice project. I think it's really going to improve your house. I think it's, it's going to look great. As to whether the special permit, I guess it, it, you know, you are intensifying the non-conformity in the sense that the lot's undersized and there's more building on the lot. But I don't think that's more detrimental than what currently exists, the non-conformities. And I, I agree with uh, the chairman that the variance is needed just because of that, you know, hard curve on the lot, which makes it difficult to, and it's, and it's a very small incursion into the setback. So I would, I'll be more in favor of this application.
I would have to agree with all that. I think you coming out here just pretty much raise awareness to just ask for having a respectful construction site. And I think the petitioners will do all their best to do that respectfully.
Thank you. Michael, would you make a motion?
Uh, petition of David O'Leary and Erica Frontiero seeking special permit uh, to alter and expand pre-existing non-conforming structure and variance from front yard setbacks to construct an addition and deck at twenty-five Castleview Drive. And I would move approval of the special permit. It, it potentially is existing, is uh, creating additional uh, non-conformity. It's not substantially more detrimental. Uh, and uh, the variance is clearly supported by the arc road out in front uh, that building. And I think it is a small incursion, as Catherine had said. So I'd move approval of the special permit and the variance for the reasons stated.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve as submitted. Roll call vote?
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, for all.
Ms. Lipton?
Yes, for both the variance and the special permit.
Mr. Nyman? Mr. Nyman?
Michael?
Michael?
Frozen.
Oh, he's frozen.
Pause.
You're breaking up.
Yep.
Yeah, your sound's a little choppy.
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, great.
I can hear you, yep.
So we had, we had called for a vote. You heard Peter and Catherine vote in favor. It came to you and you froze.
Uh, sorry, should I, should I, in favor of the variance and the special permit?
Thank you.
Mr. Pracy?
I also vote yes. You've heard our decisions favorable. We appreciate a, you could provide a draft decision for us to work from. That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, our last hearing of the evening is the petition of Simon Prudenza seeking a special permit under one point ten to alter, expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure and variance three point two point two from front and side yard setbacks, lot area and vegetative coverage in order to expand a four-unit multifamily dwelling to seven units at fifty-two Taylor Street. Tony Frontiero.
All right, good work on it. Again, Sal Frontiero, forty-six Middle Street for the petitioner, Simon Prudenza. Uh, this is a petition uh, asking for a dimensional relief necessary for Mr. Prudenza to apply to the city council uh, to convert a four-family dwelling into a seven-family dwelling. Uh, the property is in the R-five zoning district. It's a, approximately six thousand five hundred thirty-four square foot lot and it contains a four-story, four, four-family building. The rest of the site is lawn, concrete walkways, stone stairs, and parking areas. Structure is non-conforming as to left side yard setback, front yard setback, lot area and building height. I thought I was sharing my screen. I'm not sure what happened, but uh, the the petitioner proposes to build a dimensionally compliant uh, thirty-four by thirty addition to the rear of the building, again, all within the setbacks, connected to the existing building by a stairway. By way of history, sometime in nineteen ninety-eight to nineteen ninety-nine, site contained a three-family structure and the petitioner's predecessor entitled, not sure what it's not sharing. The petitioner's predecessor entitled obtained relief necessary to convert it to a four-family and did so all within the confines of the building by building out basement. Owner then sought, at that time sought variances for lot area, lot width, lot frontage, front and side yard setbacks, building height, percentage of vegetative cover and frontage width, and special permits for lot area for dwelling unit and open space for dwelling unit, which are now uh, within the jurisdiction of the city council, not, not the ZBA. So we got, uh, end up getting relief from the ZBA to convert to the fourth unit. So and this relief, the ZBA conditioned their relief upon installation of curving, retaining wall, paving and placement of shrubs, all of which were done at that time. It's worthy of note here that what we're doing actually lessens the uh, height. So the height relief that was sought before is no longer necessary. And due to the fact that the board was only approving a fourth unit within the, within the building footprint, within the cube, you know, some question as to whether it's necessary here to ask for variances or just uh, modification of variances. I ended up asking for a variance, variances are new. Uh, it's obviously up to this board's discretion how they want to look at that. As to the variances, uh, as to hardship, the hardship results from the location of the house on the site coupled with the topography of the site. Um, the existing home is located well to the front. The existing home is located well to the front part of their lot, only 2.4 feet from the front lot line. The site is 52 feet wide and the home is approximately 36 feet wide, leaving only a small alley on each side. On the left side, that area is taken up by a walkway and on the right side it's taken up by a parking space. So due to these limitations, it's impossible to comply with the front yard setback, left side yard setback and the, and the 65% vegetative cover requirement without raising and moving the building. Again, these, none of these, none of these areas are changing at all. The, the variances are necessary due to the fact that we're expanding the building. So the actual addition itself is fully compliant. So as to the front yard setback, parking in the front yard setback area, there is a space there in order to move it beyond the front yard setback area, it would have to go further in and it, and it sort of narrows as it goes in. You result in a situation where if you comply with the front yard setback for parking, where you can't park in the front yard setback, you'd result in a situation where you can't open the doors. So although the parking space could physically be moved so it's not the front yard setback, it's not really practical to do here. And also as to the, you have to eliminate a necessary means of egress to do so. Well, here we go. Second, the circumstances here arise from the position of the house and the topography of the site, as I said. And this is not common to the lots in the area. Most of the lots in the area are square and do not have the same juxtaposition of the house and do not have the same topography issues. Matter of fact, they built a stone wall in the backyard just to create a flat area for, for, so they could have a yard. And third, the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or derogating from the intent of the ordinance. Again, all variances concern existing nonconformities and are requested due to the change from four units to seven. So the addition itself will not be, will not affect these. As such, I don't think there'll be any change to the neighborhood as a result of granting of the variances because those conditions currently already exist. And the zoning ordinance would be unaffected. The variances are basically needed for legal purposes, not for construction purposes. If, if this change is allowed here, excuse me, if this relief is allowed here, we then have to apply to the city council for the, for the lot area per dwelling unit, open space per dwelling unit and the ability to go from four to seven units. If that happens, the reason we asked for seven rather than six is because we wanted to have one that's inclusive of the affordable requirements. So it would comply with the inclusionary zoning requirements. One of the units will be deemed affordable. And also, yeah, deed restricted affordable, yes. And also, the, any four unit now has to be sprinkled if it's built a new or if you're expanding to a four unit. This building is exempted. However, if we go to seven units, it loses all of its grandfathered status and as a result, the entire building would have to be sprinkled, all seven units. So I would submit that that would result in a safer situation. And also, this is, I think, the type of housing, although this issue is really before the city council more than here, this is the type of housing that I think the city needs. It's not in a high-rent district. It's in a district where the rents are going to be reasonable for families. So I think it'll meet that need as well. As far as the relief sought specifically, again, the, the existing and the proposed are exactly the same because this is, this is implicated by the change in use, not the construction. 15 feet is required for front yard and we're proposing 2.4 feet. And for a variance of 12.6, and existing is 2.4. Left side yard setback, asking for seven and a half. Existing is five feet, proposed is five feet, asking for a two and a half foot variance. Vegetative cover, 65% is required, 14% is existing and 14% is proposed for a 51% request. As far as lot area, it's 10,000 square feet, 6535 is existing, 6535 is proposed and for a variance of 3,464 feet. As to the special permit to alter and expand, here, you know, one thing I want to point out is, you know, we did send letters to the butters and the only really feedback we heard was regarding parking. And I think there's a bit of a misunderstanding. When you look at this property, you would think there's only one parking space. There are actually seven. So it does comply with parking. Again, even though that's really an issue before the council if this goes forward, I think it should be addressed here as well because I think the neighbors do have some legitimate concerns about that. So there has been an issue in the past where I think when the, when the residents come to park, they automatically go down Taylor Street and if they find it on street parking space, they take it. Because their, their rear yard parking is off a Sadler Street. So it requires sort of looping around the neighborhood. And one thing we're more than happy to do, and I think it will put far less strain on parking, and I'm not sure if this would be a condition, if this board approves it or whether it be a council condition, but we're happy to condition any tendencies or condominium documents on at least one car parking in those spaces so they'll be full at all time. And that'll sort of get rid of the tendency to automatically want to park on Taylor Street because it's convenient. So we do want people to sort of funnel back there to the back and park in the rear lot. So there will be no additional strain on parking if that's done. Also, there's no real obstruction to the house to the rear. It's set up higher than, so it sort of sees over this house. And again, the additional will not result in new nonconformities. All the applicable setbacks will be met and the average height of the building would actually be lowered. So I think, again, just reiterate, it's important to keep in mind that this is the type of housing we need in the city. It's not luxury housing, it's downtown housing. And for those reasons, I would submit that the special permission issue is this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions. Thank you.
Questions by the board?
I have a question. You say this is, the buildings are connected by the decks?
Yes.
Saying there's no common wall that in the?
No, there's no common wall, no.
Multifamily, they have to share a common?
Well, they could certainly do that. We can certainly redesign it for that, that reason.
And like if we build a two-family, we can't just connect it with a porch. They have to share a common wall or it's not a, by definition, a legitimate.
And we can, we can revise that for the council if this, if this board is inclined to vote in favor.
My other question is, the parking, traditionally during change of uses, the parking is before us. You're saying it's going to be before the city council?
Well, the reason I say that, it could be before you in terms of the, what's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So it's kind of a, of a gray area. The reason I said it's before the council is one of the six elements and look, seven elements now that you look at for a use special permit is traffic flow and safety. So one could argue there is some overlap. It is sort of before the ZBA in terms of generally regarding what's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. But it would also be, I think, addressed by the, by the council when looking at traffic flow and safety.
Is the existing parking staying? It's not getting any bigger? That retaining wall's not being moved?
The retaining wall likely will be moved back so that the house does not sit on it. So it'll be moved back a few feet. That'll make the backyard area a little smaller.
Well, because the parking spaces will not meet the adequacy of dimensional requirements of a multifamily.
What do you mean? How so?
They have to meet, they have to be lined, they have to be?
Oh, yeah, we can do all that. The nine by, they're going to be nine by 18.
They're not big enough to meet the, the nine by 21 or 22.
I think it's nine by 18, I believe.
They're not big enough.
Oh.
I pulled in there and could not turn around without hitting the wall across the street.
We could?
So I had to back out.
We're happy to move the wall forward. We can do that as well. There's plenty of room there to do that.
I'm just saying, if, if the parking was on our thing, that would be a major problem. Council, I don't know what they're, they're going to look at, but I don't see how any of those spaces meet the ordinance requirements for parking.
I think we have, we do have room to move that wall forward where the parking is to make those compliant. There's plenty of room between the building and the other retaining wall to do so. So that can be accomplished.
So I guess the question for me is what's before us? With, with respect to the parking, I'm, because I'm a little confused. My feeling is the same as Joe's because I walked up the stairs. I didn't drive there, but I walked up the stairs and looked around. It didn't look nearly big enough for, to be able to turn around.
Yeah, it was more of a depth issue than a width issue. We can certainly make that larger. Make it deeper.
So if that's before, if that's not before the city council and that's before us, then the plan that we currently have is not adequate.
Yeah, we, we could submit a revised plan to show that. We'd be happy to do that.
I guess you can get clarification, but it seems to me that parking will be before the city council because if he gets the use permit for seven units, that's when the seven parking spaces are required, right? So?
That's correct, yep.
We'd be jumping the gun.
Right now, we need four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you raised good points. I, I agree totally. We could move that forward so they are deep enough. We could do that before we apply to the council. If we got relief here, obviously.
So if we, if we stick to the idea that what's before us is going to be just the alter and expand and the front yard variance and side yard variance, limit our decision to that tonight, deferring everything else to the city council. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Right, but I, I would agree with the, I just want to weigh in with Michael and the chairman that the parking was a concern too. So you may want to make sure you get that nine by 18 or whatever it is worked out before you go up there.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're going to take some public testimony then. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward or if you're on Zoom.
Sal, can you take the screen down? Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Hit your raise hand device. We have no one on Zoom, so anyone in the hall wishing to speak in favor of the application? Hearing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposal? Please come forward. A reminder, we need your name and address for the record first.
Greg Kohler. I live at 56 Taylor Street. My property abuts his property. Maximum between the main house and my property line is no more than 15 feet. And the driveway that he speaks of for the very low apartment, there's a wall, a cement wall on the other side of, on the other side of my fence, which is actually my property line. My property line is one foot beyond that fence, all the way up. And the road that you're talking about to get to that parking spaces is only an access road for all the properties, including my own. And second of all, the road's not, it's a one-way road, Taylor Street. Where are they going to park all these vehicles? Where are they going to put the dumpsters? There is no place to put any of this stuff. And people can say what they want. I've been up on that hill now for over 43 years. And I've been in the present house I'm in for 24. Got to the right of it.
Correct.
I am, if you're facing his house, I'm to the right.
Okay, thank you.
I have the big tree in the front of the house.
Hey, anything else?
You use that little access road to get to the rear of your property?
Yes, I do. Yep, we all do. That access road covers my house, Simon's house, the next house over and the very end house. So there's four houses on that, plus the house up behind both of us. He uses that access road because he has parking spaces on his property at the end. And there is not enough room for six cars up there. Because in order to even turn into that lot, you need a lot more than another six feet of driveway. And if he moves that rear wall forward to make access for the parking and the yard that he was talking about on the upper level, just below the parking area, that's going to be null and void with the addition coming one way, parking lot coming the other. There will be no yard left. All that will be left is the very upper where the parking spaces are or where they would be. Now, he tells me, oh, yeah, everything's already passed. I've already got the permits. I've got this, I've got that. I told Simon, I says, I'm going to oppose this because I've been up here far longer than you have. And I do not agree with it because there just is no room. And his tenants that are currently living there, only one of them uses that upper lot. The rest of them all park down on the street in front of the house. They don't park up top unless they're forced to in the wintertime due to a storm. And then getting access to that roadway to come in on a real heavy snow, there's no place to put it. So it's a lot more to it than what he's explaining or telling you about. I mean, I like Simon, don't get me wrong. He's been a really good neighbor. His neighbors have been good neighbors. But I just cannot go along with this king-size addition that he wants to add on to the back of the house. And that's going to cut down anything that I have as far as privacy for my backyard. Yeah, that's pretty much all I have to really say on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Marie Mondello. I live at 65 Taylor Street, across the street. And my concern is about the parking as well. Taylor Street is very congested with many multifamily homes and I don't think people are going to use that lot. Basically all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I thank you. Tracy O'Neil, 12 Friends Street. Friends Street runs parallel to Taylor. I just went and visited. I took a picture of the property. It's a monstrosity next to the gentleman that was, that spoke before me. And I looked at the, have you guys done a site visit?
Of course.
Yeah, we all do individually.
Yeah, because, well, it's a very congested neighborhood. But that driveway, I looked, driveway is street level and then stairs go up to one level and does it go up higher? Yeah, so it goes up two levels. So I don't know how he, they're saying that the roof line is going to be shorter, it's not going to be as high. And somewhere in his presentation, the gentleman, I'm guessing he's an attorney, said, he mentioned the word hardship. So I don't know where hardship comes from, but turning this from a four-family to a seven-family, one, it's going to take away that gentleman's privacy. It's going to add congestion to an already congested neighborhood. It's going to be, I saw, quite honestly, and construction is, is just terrible. And we all know that even though it's only three more apartments or four more apartments, you only need one parking space per unit in the R5 district. Everybody has two cars. If you get two people, most people are going to share an apartment because who can afford an apartment all by themselves, right? So they're going to have two cars. So as far as accommodating seven cars, hmm, I think you'll be looking at a lot more cars. And also, that's a school neighborhood and the attorney mentioned a curb. Is there a curb on that street? Curb in front of the house? I thought it was flat. But anyway, I'm very much opposed to this. It's going to add congestion into the district as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? Not you get one crack at the apple? Okay, seeing no other rebuttal?
Just, again, this is sort of what I thought would happen is we're conflating parking issue with the structural issue that's really before the board here. So as far as Mr. Kohler talking about they're not being enough room, you look at the site plan, there's plenty of room between that where the house is going to sit and the back parking area to accommodate 18-foot deep spaces. Again, not technically before you, but there's plenty of room there. As far as privacy goes, we're happy to have a fence installed. There's already a requirement that shrubbery be maintained along the, the property line between Mr. Kohler and Mr. Prudenza's property. So the privacy? So the privacy's maintained that way. We're happy to put a fence. We're happy to continue, uh, any kind of requirement of vegetative cover being maintained there. Uh, again, as, as, as far as, uh, Ms. Mondo, her concern was, again, parking, uh, again, a, a, a city council issue. Uh, and as I said, we're happy to put anything in the relief at the, at the, at this level or at the city council level, which basically requires any leases or condominium documents, whichever way they may go, to require them to park in those spaces. That being the case, we would guarantee to have seven people parking off-street. Uh, old neighborhoods have parking problems. Gloucester has a housing problem. They conflict quite often. We try to strike a balance between the two. And I think what's being done here is striking a balance. The parking spaces, when made compliant dimensionally, are the minimum number of spaces required by the ordinance. If somebody has an issue that everybody has two cars, that, um, sort of concern should be taken to the city council as far as amending our zoning ordinance to require more than, more than, uh, one car per unit in R5. But as it is, we comply with what R5 requires. Again, we are happy to make that dimensionally require, uh, dimensionally compliant. Um, and also, if the deck is eliminated and we move that structure closer and put another se, another means of egress in, that would also, uh, have less bulk, less, less, uh, the addition wouldn't go as far back. So that would also leave more room for parking. So we're happy to do that. Um, and again, we're happy to condition the relief on anything we can do to make it so that the residents are required to use the off-street parking. I do understand the concern, because you drive by the house on Taylor, and that the gut instinct is to take the closest space, because you say, well, if I loop around, uh, the other way, there might not be parking spaces. But if we do this, every, everyone's gonna be designated with one unit. If there's two cars, you're gonna know whether, whether the other person's out or not, generally. So, uh, we can encourage people through, uh, you know, requirements, the leases or condo docs, to use those back spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. So I, I just want to say for, I guess everyone's understanding, because it's a seven-family, it's a, it's gonna be a major project before the city council, and they're gonna take up many things. What we're ruling on tonight is sort of the pre-existing, you know, the pre-permitting of basically just the footprint. We're, we're judging a, an addition to a non-conforming structure of thirty-four by thirty-eight Fact of how many units are gonna be in it isn't actually part of our debate tonight. So what we're looking at is, is this red square, this addition, qualify for variance, and obviously easily meeting the standard for special permit to alter and expand. Now, when the rest of it, the change of use from four to seven comes in, that's when the parking and the, the lot coverage and the square feet per dwelling unit all will come in before the city council. But it's not before us tonight, as I understand it. Any disagreement on the board of that? Mike, you gotta move every once in a while, so we know you're not frozen.
Uh, no, I'm pondering. Sorry, the, it's, it's inside of my head right now. I'm not a big fan of this project, but I'm trying to be careful that I stay within my purview, our purview zoning board. Um, but I'm not a big fan of the project.
I, I just, I hate to go back out there. I mean, for me, maybe I can just take another look at it, wrap my head around. I know some of this, the parking is gonna go to the council and whatnot, but just let me digest that one more time and, and feel better about it. I, I don't hate the project. I, I understand the need for housing and, and, you know, we work with what we have, and, um, testimony from the neighborhood also weighs in. But, I mean, if I can look at it again and, and just, because before the testimony, you know, I felt good about it, but, you know, just hearing what they got to say, maybe I'll just take another glance on it.
I'm not posting myself taking a look at it either. If you could stake out where the building footprint's gonna be on the, on the lot, just so we can see how far it's from that. Again, parking is not before us, although it's always a concern. I'm, on our board, I'm sure it's gonna be for city council, but, um, for us, it's the footprint on the ground and, uh, impact on the neighborhood. And, you know, the neighborhood is a dense neighborhood, so that does come into consideration to say, you know, I, is he asking to be any more dense than anybody else? But, um, yeah, if you wouldn't mind continuing?
Yeah, I do think density is also, I think, before the council in some ways, between lot area per dwelling and open space. But it is a concern here. This, it's confusingly a lot of overlap, really, when you look at this, because what's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood is kind of a broad, uh, analysis, so, and then the council has specific analysis of those same issues. We're happy to continue. I, I think if we continue, um, I'm not sure that the next meeting would be enough, because we probably should look a little bit at, uh, you know, whether or not we need to connect those two buildings to something else besides the, uh, the, there's no sense in, uh, this board...
That was smaller footprint.
Right, and there's no sense in this board granting the relief if we're gonna end up modifying the building, we end up coming back anyway. You know, I think that we can't, we can't have the relief here and then say, okay, we changed it, even if it got smaller. I think still that would acquire, we're required to go by the plans that are approved. Yeah, so I don't know that it's productive to not take a look at that. Um, and I think if the second meeting in September probably would be, I hope that would give us enough time where we could maybe put something together and get it to you in advance. And I'm happy to, you know, meet with the neighbors directly. Unfortunately, we did not hear from any of them when we sent letters out. You know, it would've been nice to hear that ahead of time, we could've addressed it.
I'm not sure I'm gonna be here. What's the date?
It'll be on the twelfth, it'll be the twenty-sixth.
I won't be here on the twenty-sixth.
You won't be on the twenty-sixth either? Oh, okay. Yeah, so we'll entertain a motion to continue to September twenty-sixth?
I'll not be here on the twenty-sixth, the four of us. I know, um, I had to change my dates.
Yeah, well, I don't think it makes sense to go to the twelfth of September. I think it makes sense to go to the tenth. Yeah, as opposed to going shorter.
I move, um, continuance of the petition for fifty-two Taylor Street to our October tenth meeting?
Second.
You have a motion made and seconded to continue. Roll call, vote?
Ms. Schluckti?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Hey, can I, just a comment before Sal gets away. So at some point prior to that meeting, um, it would be nice if you could get the building staked out in the back. It would also be nice for me, um, if you could, um, stake out how far that wall's gonna have to be moved to accommodate, you know, the, the parking that you're gonna present, uh, to the city council.
We'd be happy to do that.
And on, when the plan we got sort of ended at where it says the parking ends, really couldn't tell where that is in relation to that, how wide that alley is, and is it on their property and not on their property?
Gotcha, yep.
That would clarify a lot, too. But, um, okay.
You say to really mark out the rear lot line?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, I think that would be necessary also.
That would help.
To know the depth of the spaces.
Yep.
Happy to do that.
Okay, so we're continued to the tenth?
And Sal, you'll somehow let Allison know when that's gonna all be staked out, so we can get up there?
Yeah, sure. There's no sense in making a site visit until we know we're ready.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, folks, that's it on that one. And for the record, I, um, we will be on our September twelfth meeting, we'll be back in City Hall. So that, we won't be here in Rose Baker anymore, we'll be at City Hall on Scotty on nine-twelve. Anybody on the board have anything else they want to bring up, discuss?
Good.
All righty, we have, uh, over ten or twelve pet decisions in the packet, and so we need some signatures on some, if members that aren't here can get into the office, so we can get those out to the people.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Love to adjourn. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you do the minutes? All right, nevermind.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, roll call?
Ms. Schluckti?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes, we are adjourned. Don't forget your packets.
Have a good night, all.